Oh man, we live baby, we live, we live baby, we live. What's really good family tree? Listen, let me know if you guys are down for a study session. We can line up a nice study session show. I wanted to do this update to you guys, you know, from Sunday, actually, just to know if you guys would like to do a study session. You guys come on, you know, teach the audience something and we can go through some stuff together. So let me know if there's something that you're interested in, because I would really love to do something like that with you. Hold on one second. And my goodness, I don't know if you guys have seen, like literally, this has just happened, yeah? Liverpool, a car drove into Liverpool supporters like literally minutes ago, less than half an hour ago. And it looks wild, absolutely wild. You know, I'm just gonna have to say pray for everybody, you know, out there supporting Liverpool right now. And hopefully, nobody is in a critical condition or there was no fatalities. Because that looked absolutely wild. So yeah, quick ones, just praying for Liverpool supporters and fans who are out there, who are there celebrating. But yeah, family tree. Yeah, let me know if you guys would be down for something like that. We can do a nice study session, get you guys on here like last time, like the other day. We did a nice comedic show and that was absolutely great. Had had sometimes as a sit back and listen to the brothers like really build. A saw dropping bombs, Jose as well, C's YouTube channel is just growing. Then we got man like cosmic San Kofa going in and then we had, you know, the good brothers like Easy Bands and a can asking some great questions as well. So yeah, man, I really love to just like stimulate a nice, what's called a nice study session with you guys. And get you guys in to do some stuff along those lines, because yeah, that was really good. I really, really loved that particular show. And we can even showcase more talent out there, because I know some of you guys have some great information. But y'all ain't dropping nothing, yeah? I would say everybody needs to create a channel and drop something. Because I would definitely be tuning in to whatever you guys are dropping. Recently, actually, I did a couple of posts on, on my channel, let's see if I can, can I share it? I'll try to share it with you guys. Sharing screen, nope, that's the wrong one. Yeah, there you go. So yeah, I dropped a nice one. A couple of days ago, and it says here, ask Muslims, where was the first Hijra? Generally speaking, they wouldn't even say Ethiopia, they would actually say Medina, but that's a story for another day. The correct answer for them is Ethiopia. But they would say Medina, guarantee you. We should ask them, you know, and don't even pre, don't even like prompt them on this. And then I said, you know, ask Islamic scholars and they will say Aqsum, but the sources actually say Abyssinia. Halim agrees with the sources and says Abyssinia. Kalim points out, you know, is in South Arabia, not Ethiopia. Now, everybody's mad because they don't know history or geography. And you know, I literally did a map there to show you exactly where Aqsum and Ethiopia is. So that was a really fun post. What's good, Rahul Bat, brother? What's good? All right, we've got, I believe Jamal is up in here with us. What's good?
It was good, it was good.
Yeah, yeah. Cool, let me just keep you there. And then what else did we do? We did, yeah, that was that. And then we did another one, which was a day ago, why do Muslims and Muslims apologists conflate or confuse the Negus with the Negus Nagast? Red on the lion is King Azanah, use the term Malik interchangeable with Negus. Yellow lion on the lions, he states he is the king of kings using Malik, Malakin interchangeable with Negus Nagast. And you know, just literally just showing there that, you know, some people were like, oh, I don't see certain things in inscriptions. I'm like, you do realize here, when you lot say Negus, you're not, you lot think you're saying, you lot believe, obviously, you don't know Ethiopian gaze or anything to do with that culture, but you lot think, in your minds, you're thinking of the emperor when you hear the term Negus. But Negus literally means a king, anybody, any king underneath the empire of the Aqsumite kingdom would have been termed a Negus in their language. It's just, that's what it is, okay? But yeah, I had some good funds with that. Let me just see if I could actually show you guys a little something, something as well, just to kind of show you. What do we want to go for? We want to go for the first one. So yeah, let's do the first migration. Let's do first Hijri. First Hijra, there you go. First Hijra, migration to Abyssinia. And look, this is what I'm talking about. The migration to Abyssinia, known as the first Hijra, was an episode in the early history of Islam, where the first followers of the Islamic Prophet Muhammad, they were known as the Sahabah or the companions, migrated from Arabia due to the persecution by the Qorish, the ruling Arab, ruling Arab tribal confederation of Mecca. They sought and were granted refuge in the Kingdom of Aqsum. You see, these are the little baits and switches here that it's like, hold on. The migration here, if you can read the Arabic right here, yeah, it says here, let me just highlight. So this word here is Al Hijra, yeah, and then Illa, like two, or Illy, to Al Habashah. So say it's a migration to Habashah, but then they tell you it's to the Kingdom of Aqsum. It's like, hold on. You do realize that Aqsum and Habashah is two different places. Obviously, they don't know this. And this is what I mean, like, I don't know if it's racism where like all black people are the same. Yeah, they will look alike, man. So they must be the same people type vibe. I don't know what it is, but it's just funny that there is a blatant switch. And then when I pull it up, then nobody, nobody likes it. It's like, no, but we've been taught this all our lives. So it must be that. The kingdom's capital was Aqsum, which is an ancient city in Ethiopia, the running asylum, who received them is known in Islamic sources as Najashi. The Negus of the kingdom, modern historians have alternatively identified him with the Aqsumite King Arma. And Allah, some of the Sahabah exiles returned from, so anyways, yeah, so even like, you know, academics are trying to co-sign it. And even bringing up Aqsum kings when it's an Abyssinian king, right? Two different things, two completely different things. And they now tell you is King Arma, or it could be King El-Saham. It's like, bro. Like, I don't know, man. Sometimes I just find stuff funny where people just don't know how to read history. They don't know the culture, they don't know the language, they don't know the geography, but they speak so confident in their ignorance. And it's just, it's just a very funny thing for me to witness on a daily basis, having to deal with a lot of these people. What's really good, the Ansar in the year of the elephant. And all of that is, again, even the whole year of the elephant stuff, I know you lot have been taught this, right? But it's a whole heap of nonsense. Okay, a whole heap of nonsense. And you know what? Yeah, actually, let me drop this to you guys. Let me drop this, because I was like, oh, here we go. We got a can up in the building. What's good, Akan?
What's good, what's good, what's good?
So let me just.
Oh, man.
Oh, man. Let me get this up, let me get this, because people like Midas, something Anthony, I can't remember, Anthony Sutton, they will love this one. They will love this.
He said, man, he said, let's chop it up, man, let's chop it up. I see, I see you're trying to come with the smoke. You're trying to come with Sutton, but.
Definitely, hold on, hold tight, hold tight. But yeah, I know these guys, yeah, not you, I'm not talking about you right now. But yeah, I know these guys will love this, because I know some of them are actually reading the material, right? And they want to quote Shaun Anthony, not knowing that. Yeah, I don't even know the half of it. Okay, cool. Let me do this. So I'm gonna play. Here, let's see if I can bring this up on the screen. Be with me, family, be with me. It's coming out right now. Let me know if you lot can hear this or see this, yeah? Just mute the mic for a minute.
No, this, this brother, the Asian guy on the right, oh god.
Uh, no, it's not him, it's Shaun Anthony on the left that we're listening to really. But yeah, let me just mute your mic for a minute. Okay, cool. So let's play this. Very interesting.
I think that the resources were, so I think there's sources for determining Abraha's reign and his campaigns in Arabia, but not for the Prophet Muhammad's birth. The problem, the idea of the Prophet Muhammad's war.
Hold on, let me bring it back. Okay, and family tree, let me know if you can actually hear this as well. Let me know if you can actually hear it. For those of you guys who are on the live stream right now, let me know if you can hear it.
Thank you so much. One more, can you, can one consider the epigraphies mentioning Abraha, Abraha and his attack on the Arabian Peninsula and the time of Yemen's conquest by the Sasanian king to be among the sources used for determining Muhammad's date of birth?
I think that the resources for, so I think the resources for determining Abraha's reign and his campaigns in Arabia, but not for Prophet Muhammad's birth. The problem, the idea of Prophet Muhammad's war in the year of the elephant, I think is pure fabrication of the century.
Pure fabrication of the eighth century, let's go.
It's, it, it causes a lot of consternation later on. When, um, so if you look at a lot of the traditions of Azuhri or Musa bin Opah, then some others, and they put the year of the elephant so much earlier than the Prophet Muhammad's birth. He had these layers, he started like, what is going on with this? Like, this is obviously to be rejected. And we know that, you know, it must be this date. And one of the ways that this date was settled upon, this is key to remember that it was, that David Hogg's work was taught widely in Baghdad, it was by the use of astrological history. Okay, so one of the ways that you determined when events happen and when important events happen is to horoscope it by drawing historical horoscopes. This is a story graphical method and a method of decision making that is all in favor unless you're an economist. If you're an economist, you're basically an astrologer of modern times in my view. But in essence, this is how Baghdad is constructed, or how they decided way to do so and how to do so. And astrologers had a big influence on the Islamic historiography. We didn't have a nice account of how the cause needed to determine the horoscope of the Prophet Muhammad. And how it had to be made, and the stars and planets, this is a common special talent to know so much appreciated on this side.
And I think our friend Henry Lemon has an article on this called the Age of Muhammad and the Chronology of the Sira. And what she talks about specifically about exactly what you're talking about, how it was constructed later. And then he mentions the age of forty as well, as you did, that this is why the age of forty was chosen or perhaps chosen. So I think that's it for as far as the questions from the audience, but I did.
See, yeah, that there breaks a little sign down. I'm sure he did a little bit. I'm sure there was more to it than just that though. One second, family, one second. Let's go to this section here. Let's go to this one. Because he break, he says it.
And I'll, I'll give you an example of the problem, things that I do not think are historical, without the early tradition works. For one of the things that's interesting to find is that the early tradition, the early Magazi literature is absolutely not in agreement about when the Prophet Muhammad was born. It is how very famously puts it in the year of the elephant. Almost no early Medinan does. Azuhri puts the year of the elephant many, many years prior to the birth of Muhammad. The same thing goes for Musa bin Opah. In general, how chronology worked was more or less guesswork, with the exception, I believe, of the date of Hijra. And so a lot of the things that are used as a substitute for actual knowledge of the day or the decision, in the first instance, it sometimes can be problematic. So the example I think that's interesting that I would give is the idea that the Prophet Muhammad was forty years of age when he received his.
Yeah, he breaks that down. He breaks it down. Go there and watch this thing. I found it very interesting to, to.
So what's the, what's the whole angle of my mind? I don't get, is he saying basically the year of the elephant conflicts with each other? Or what's he saying? The Prophet Muhammad didn't exist?
Oh, no, no, no.
What's, like, what's he saying? What's the whole?
He definitely believes the Prophet Muhammad exists.
Yeah, I can gather that. So what's he trying to say? The year of the elephant.
Yeah, like, okay, so really truly mainstream scholarship, I believe, okay? I'm pretty certain, let me just say, I'm pretty certain, the majority of scholars, yeah, who's worth any, you know, like, thought, like, is basically know that the year of the elephant is something just made up. And it's not actually rooted in history. It's not rooted in anything historical to do with Muhammad.
When you say the scholars, can you actually list me their names? I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying nothing right now. I'm just literally listening to you.
All right, so Shaun Anthony is right there. I don't need to even.
My pen and notepad.
I don't even need to refer.
You say this a few times, but I've not actually brought you to it, like, what scholars? Because who is a scholar, scholar, scholar?
So Shaun Anthony, right now, he just breaks it down, right? You don't even need to go to a book. He's right there, alive in the flesh, breaking it down to you.
Shaun Anthony, yeah?
Let me, let me do this. Give me a second. Give me a second. I'll give you some more names. I'm just gonna give you like two more names.
I'm definitely gonna pull out some scholars on the Islamic side.
Oh yeah, we're not talking about Islamic scholarship. We're talking about actual Western.
No, 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 yeah, Western scholarship, yeah, on Islam.
Yeah, so let's go over.
These Shaun Anthony, he's not like the, the head authority of the Western scholarship on Islam, is he?
No, he's not the, I don't, there isn't really like a proper head like that, but there is people who are very much so recognized as.
Yeah, yeah, recognized. He's the, he's the most recognized, what do you say, Western scholarship based on Islam?
Give me a second. Okay, cool. We can go to.
Got Shaun Anthony, yeah, go on.
Shaun Anthony, and then we can go to do with the chronology right here, age of chronology. So we've got Henry Lemmon, Lemens.
Henry, how do you spell his, is it there on the, oh yeah, 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 Lemens, yeah.
Yeah, traditionally, generally, of the year of the elephant is the point of De Pardre, it probably represented the year of Maimis Berf. To what precise fact does this strange designation respond? Might it not derive to the last analysis from Quran? Good independence of the Sira on the sacred texts, one always has the right to suspect such a religion, blah, 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 blah. Anyways, he goes through all of it here in very good detail.
Yeah.
Think, what's the other scholar's name that's actually in this book as well? Give me a second. And then we also have Abraha and Muhammad, some observation, a purpose on chronology.
Our corner.
Lawrence, yeah.
Is he one, yeah?
Yeah, there you go. There you go. So you have three scholars who basically make mention of it.
And you see these scholars, are they from different sources or is this all from the same source?
Maybe that makes sense.
Basically, Shaun Anthony, Henry Lemens, and Lawrence.
Conrad.
Conrad, yeah. Are, are they all, like, their narratives, is it coming from one source, like one book? Like, basically, this book you're shown right here, or is it?
These are.
They've got their own independent sources talking about the same thing.
So they.
Even though it is independent in a way, but I mean, is there another, like, book outside this one here? That, like, commentary of these scholars, not in the same source, you know what I mean?
This particular book, I believe, is by Ibn Warak, and it's a compilation of various different articles. So they've written their articles in certain journals, but this particular author slash editor has compiled, you know, their articles together with their permission, obviously, to go in his book. So right now, they're literally all together in this one.
Okay, so basically, the, the, it's like me compiling works of scholars, but I've asked for their permission?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay. No, 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 no problem.
They've written their works time ago, and that scholar has started to compile them. So yeah, so there's just three off the bat, just letting you know. That's enough, there is just.
So we got free though, I thought he said all Western scholarship.
Yeah, all West, remember, all Western scholarship don't need to talk on topics that's already known and agreed upon.
Would you say these three govern the whole Western scholarship regarding Islam? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm telling you that they've written on this topic, okay, considering written on this topic. And there isn't no argumentation against it to say, yeah, any scholar who's doing the proper analysis of these stories would know. Once you're in the field, you understand the methodology, you would know that, yeah, cool. We know that it's made up stories. There there's the one, there there's the one who broke it down to show you how it's made up.
Yeah.
That's all.
Oh, then I said, I just got, so yeah, go and say that again, please. I didn't hear you properly say, say that again.
So, um, within the scholarship, you've been given methodologies, yeah? For example, you have Islamic studies, you may have Quranic studies. Let's say Islamic studies is what this will fit under. You've given certain methodologies within side of history of how you can tease out, you know, certain things that you're reading when sending the genre. So basically, you have something called source criticism and textual criticism and other little things as well.
So when you're saying, wait, what, what, fast forward, just to fast forward it, are you, when you're saying there's, because I heard you say about no one's argued against it or whatever, yeah? Like, I don't get, is it, is their works known? Like, is it, is it widely known and then people was meant to rebuttal it or like?
It's why, we're talking about academia. So in academia, there's things like journals, okay? So well, well-respected journals, okay? Where you can literally go online, you know, and.
So you're telling me a scholar in, in like, let's say Mauritania knows about these guys here?
We're talking about, we're talking about Western academia. We're talking about.
Strictly to do with the West.
I would, I would say that these are taught in more liberal Muslim countries, maybe, or they've stayed poor in Muslim countries. But we're not talking about religious Islam.
But don't sleep on Mauritania. They've got some, they've got some things that like.
It could be Mauritania.
Religion, whatever, like.
Yeah, if you're dealing with.
Medicine and that, they've put in, you know what I mean?
Actual critical scholarship, yeah, then yeah, these works are well respected.
Boy, man, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to check on these scholars, definitely. And I'm gonna have to check what you mean by well-respected, you know what I'm saying? Because if it was well-respected and what you're saying, like, like, these narratives should be more broader. You know what I mean? Like, these narratives, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not objecting here, if you listen to me properly. I'm just literally saying, these narratives should be more broader. Do you know what I'm saying?
The reason why is because this is academia. This is what you go to university to learn. So that means it's a very smaller population of people.
But there's been Muslims that go university and learn. So what are you trying to say? And so their intelligence?
No, we're not simply talking about Muslims who go to university and learn. We're talking about Muslims, for example, who go to university to learn Quranic studies or Islamic studies.
So basically, some, let's, let's put Mufti Abu Layyif, for example. Are you basically trying to say he knows about these works and he's not on rebuttal?
I don't know, I don't know what he knows or not. I'm saying, we're talking about, I'm talking about people who.
Because he's, he's got credentials, big boy credentials, so it's like.
That's cool. Has he gone to university to learn Islamic studies? Yes or no?
He's got, he's, he's gone to university and all of that. He's got Mufti, he's got, he's got the degree to be a Mufti, so yeah, he has.
That's religious, yeah, that's religious education.
But he can, he can give fatwa, so that's outside.
Okay, so when we're talking about this, we're talking about Islamic studies and Islamic studies students are not going to give fatwa because.
This is, this, it has to be respected amongst the cri, the critical Western academia. You can't say it's respected in academia. That's bullshit, bro. Sorry, I'm sorry, my language, but that's cap. How could that be respected in ac, in critical? Then I hear you in it. But to say it's respected in academia, then this should be like a very good argument for every Christian. They shouldn't even be talking about Aisha or anything else but this, like, everything walking should be narrating this, you know what I'm saying? And it's only three people, so I'm kind of baffled how this three people. Anyway, go on, I'm listening, I'm listening. I'm not objecting, by the way. I'm just asking questions.
Unfortunately.
When our object is gonna be.
Christians and Muslims and the rest of everybody else, they're dealing with apologetics and not actual critical scholarship.
But even the critic, even though the Christian critics, there, there is only a few that will be saying what you're saying. Because I have come across people that will even try to discard the existence of the Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him. But then you've got someone that will say this, and you've got some that will say that. It's like, everybody's got their little bit of story to say, there's not a, if you really want to get into it, there's not a general agreement on who this guy is then. So everyone can have a piece of their pie.
I, I come, you have to stop talking. All right, so you have, in general speaking, you have actual academe, academics, right? Actual people that go to university who learn this stuff, and students of those and professors and teachers, right? That's mainstream stuff that is not generally.
Get to your, get to, what is the point? I hear that, I hear they've gone to school, yeah, they've.
I don't, I don't even have a point, because that to me is, is beyond anything. This is actual academia, academic works, yeah, that you can go, you can look at, you can go and see.
Yeah, no problem, but what is the?
I'm saying to you, I'm saying to you. Yeah, I'm saying to you, yeah. See, I've told you, he's literally, I don't even need to say anything more. The guy has told you what it is.
What about the year of the elephant? But that's something we've already discussed on previously on your videos.
Yes, we've discussed it, yeah, right? But some of the audience need to hear it from a scholar within side of Islamic studies to understand what I'm saying, okay? That some of you guys may simply think that it's just me, you know, saying these things when you don't even.
No, 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 I have no problem. I know you're definitely calling from somewhere else. So even if you showed me his, his eyeball color, that, that's, that still wouldn't shake me up in any way. I'm just trying to gather that. Is this, basically, I'm trying to gather, like, if this is who you're going to for your whatever, then if I tackle them, what are you gonna do next, basically? Because if I actually tackle them, because now it's no more you now, isn't it? I don't really need to tackle you. So if I tackled these people, like, what are you saying now? Would you agree?
My broski.
Because if they have, if they've got, if they've got room for question marks and I fill in that gap, what are you gonna say?
All right, I'll say this, yeah. I think personally, I think you should at least take some like college slash university lessons or studies, yeah, before you can even think you can challenge certain academic scholars personally, all right?
I'm not, I'm first of all.
That's what I would say.
First of all, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be literally challenging these scholars, because I have, I have not gone to education like that, you know what I'm saying? I'm not studied like that. I'm a layman, you know?
So then what you're saying.
Let's get things definitely clear.
So when you're saying, if you, if you challenge, if you did this and you did that, I'm like, bro.
Does it mean, does it mean, does it mean? Does it mean because I'm a layman, whoever this Western scholar is, he's my higher authority? No.
That's good.
At the end of the day, I could have a certain knowledge that can still object to the scholars. I just because.
So do you object?
Certain person in his field, doesn't mean I can recognize him who he is, you know what I'm saying? Oh, I know, he may have an agenda. I don't know.
So do you object to what?
To him, you know what I'm saying? Does it mean if he says the sky's blue in Islam, I'm gonna say?
Hold on, you're talking way too much, yeah? I just want to get short, quick, because like, the audience. Listening, yeah, so we need shortness, yeah? So did you have a problem with what he said?
Bro, what, didn't we speak on the other video?
I asked you, do you have a problem with what?
I have no problem with what he said with, with there being, the even, even Mufti Abu Layyif. He even says there's not an agreement on the year of the elephant, like, that's, I'm not, like, what are you saying?
Cool.
Because my objection with you is the Negus and that the Ethiopia and the, the false Muhammad, that whole package. I don't know what you're trying to do right now. I'm just trying to understand what you're doing.
Okay, so I think you, you think that every time I, I don't know, I'm showing something to the, to the audience, but you're now thinking it's directly attacking you. This is.
No, 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 it's not, because remember, the video, what's the video called? Islamic and Kemitic teachings. This has gone straight into the post you've spoken about. This has gone straight into the post you've spoken about, so this is not even the title, I thought it would be. You get me, but then to my surprise, I'm seeing the map and that, so I'm thinking, ah, yeah, this guy's, he's replying to you guys, so I don't know, obviously. It may not be about me, of course.
Alright, cool. I will get to your stuff.
The only one that's objecting to regarding this situation, you know what I'm saying? So.
Alright, so let me get to you shortly then, okay? So, um, just to round up this one, so as you can see, our family tree, who's tuning in right now, you know. We have the whole, uh, year of the elephant stuff, like when the Prophet Muhammad was born and all this stuff here. Which I've been talking about for so long, and I'm just so grateful that, you know, you have, uh, certain scholars who are this complexion. Um, saying exactly what I'm saying, um, because therefore, it seems a little bit more credible to those people who need to hear it from, uh, those types of sources. Um, and again, uh, if you have any problem with what Shaun Anthony said, he's not saying anything, uh, that's not already. Mentioned with inside of academic.
Know what I'm saying, so.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, I'm talking to my audience, I'm talking to the audience, right? So, um, so yeah, yeah, like, it's all there, okay, Shaun Anthony has said it. We've just given a couple of sources live on the screen, which is still up, um, I would say, please. If you guys have a chance, uh, go ahead and read it, uh, this one here, uh, particularly, um, is talking about the topos or the topoi. Of the number forty, uh, as well, so you will see that, you know, Mohammed is said to be forty years of age when he sees. Received revelations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and you will see that that has nothing to do with historical basis. Um, it's just something that's made up based upon numerology, not numerology, but just numbers of. Of, uh, fullness and when a person reaches the full age of being an adult, basically. And it has nothing to do with actual age, but just the, the coming of age or something. Um, oh, sorry, let me say, years, no actual years grounding. So yeah, this is a good read, the other one, you know, breaks down even more to do with, you know, ten years in Mecca and ten years in Medina. It's all to do with symmetry and et cetera, et cetera. So the whole sixty years or the sixty-three years that Mohammed was alive is all, um, you know. Fanfiction, fanmade fiction, there's nothing, it's not based in, uh, history. Mohammed could have been sixty years or sixty-three years when he died, but it's not based in history, okay? There's nothing in there in history to, to give us that indication at all. So those two, uh, different. Uh, you know, articles I've just shown will go down in like, really break things down and you can kind of see. From an academic lens of how academics, academia really does scholarship. So please, if you get a chance, go and read those two articles. Um, my good brother on here now, Akan, um, he is, let me just get this back up. He is on here and, uh, where are you? Do, 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 he is, I think he wants to address, uh, something else that I have brought. Which I'm just gonna bring up on the screen right now, uh, for you guys to see, so I can get him into the mix. Do, 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 do. Let's go to here. Share this screen again, let's go back, let's go back. Nope, where is it? Let's go forward, backwards, forwards, forward, backwards. And then good brother God logic should be coming to the UK, eh? That should be good, uh, via channel. Here we go. Posts, so, okay, cool. I will go to this map one, since the one, that's the one that you made mention of, um, so, um, let me do this with you. Yeah, yeah, I can, where was, uh, where was the first Hijra?
Where was it?
Yeah.
It was to Ethiopia.
It's Ethiopia, yeah, cool, uh-huh, and, um, you, you're sticking by that, yeah?
Fully guns.
Alright, cool, and, uh, what does the sources say? Where does the sources say that, uh, the first Hijra was?
The sources, according to what I know, says it's the Habashia.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Which is?
Um, south of Arabia and east Africa.
No, 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 the word Habashia, what does it mean?
Oh, Habashia is to do with the Ethiopian people, but the Ochsamite people.
So the word Habashia means, uh, is where we get the word Abyssinia from.
Yeah, where we get the word Abyssinia from, yeah.
Cool, so the sources say, they went to, uh, Abyssinia. But you're saying they went to, do you agree, sorry, with Wikipedia, where they say, uh, it's actually to do with, um, Aksim? So right here.
I agree with Wikipedia.
Wikipedia says, yeah, the Kingdom of Aksim.
Nah, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with, um, if Wikipedia says it, actually, I don't mind, but. I'm talking about the, the lineage of Caleb, King Caleb, Azar Noah, that, that people, so.
My question to you is, yeah, my question to you is this, so it says here, they went to.
Oh shit, I weren't even looking on the screen, sir.
Yeah, so they said, you, so you, you know, they said they went to Abyssinia, but you're saying that they went to Ethiopia, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so how did you jump from Abyssinia to Ethiopia?
Um, basically, I'm basing it off, um, English, innit? If you really, 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 really wanna get to, I'm talking about the Abyssinians, but the same way in one of your posts. That was talking about King Azar Noah, one minute it said, um, was it, did it say King of Ethiopia? But, you know, I mean, they didn't use the exact word Ethiopia, but you know what I'm talking about.
Challenge you to get to your. Very concise, yeah, I'm gonna challenge you to get to your point very concisely, right? So, yeah, the sources say, actually, no, you know what, let me do one better, let me actually pull up the sources. Uh, hold on, let's see if I have this here. Hey, cool. Alright, so hopefully you all can see this, so, it says here, when that befell the Muslims, the messenger of God commanded them. To depart for the land of Abyssinia, okay? So, go to the land of Abyssinia, but you are saying, even though it says Abyssinia. You're saying it was to, uh, Aksim in Ethiopia.
Yeah, based on narrative as well, you know, because, um, they paid them some guys, some money, some boat people. So, yeah, based on narrative as well, not just of my speculation, definitely based on.
I want to know, yeah, it says Abyssinia, how did you jump to it now, uh, being Aksim or Ethiopia?
Cause that's what I know it to be.
No, but I'm saying, like, you, like, it clearly says Abyssinia, you know yourself that Abyssinia is in South Arabia. So how are you jumping?
Never said that, did I say that?
You said earlier on, South Arabia and Ethiopia.
Yes, East Africa, yes, that's what I said, South Arabia and East Africa, I never said South Arabia, I said both.
Okay, that's what I just said to you, so you're saying both, yeah?
Yes, yes.
How did you get to that, um, Abyssinia means South Arabia and Ethiopia?
Because that was, E- Ethiopia is, was one of their colonies. I would say, I would say they were, they're connected to the Denmark Kingdom, D M T Kingdom. But there's obviously more work that needs to be done over there, so just for now, for the sake of the convo. I'm gonna say that East Africa was one of their colonies.
How did you get that they traveled to the land? But then you got to mainland Africa, how, how, how did you make that jump?
Ah, cool, you see your other post you put up?
No, 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 we're sticking to this, we.
It's, it's, it's to correlate, it's, it's correlate, it's correlation with your question right now with your question. So I'm basically gonna use your own source to answer. So on your first post, you spoke of a king on your first post, correct? On your last post, I mean, your last one, so the last one.
Let's, let's go here, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna help you out, go ahead.
Yes, yes, this king here, that's how I jumped from Arabia to East Africa, because of this man here.
Okay, you explain it.
King Azar, he conquered East Africa, conquered the land of Kush.
He conquered the land of Kush?
Yep.
Okay, so what does that mean?
So that means that he conquered the land of Kush, so that means he was from somewhere else before he conquered it.
And where was he from?
I say South Arabia originally.
Well, he wasn't from South Arabia originally.
To my knowledge, the, the Habashi people originate in South Arabia, to my knowledge.
This man, yeah, Azar Noah, is the king of Aksim.
Yes, Aksim originate in South Arabia. Jabal Habashi and Hadra Mutsun and all them places there.
No, no.
That's where they come from.
No, Aksim is not in South Arabia.
Aksim has history in South Arabia, yes, they do.
What history do they have in South Arabia?
King Azar Noah.
Yeah, because he went over there.
Because he.
Went over there.
He ruled, he ruled the Yemen, he ruled Shiba, he ruled, um, all the other, a lot of regions where he says he's the king of. Those are the regions where they ruled, yes, they've got history in South Arabia.
Yeah, cause he conquered them, but he wasn't originally from there, he was from Aksim.
So then if he wasn't originally from there, what language they speak?
The Is.
The Is, okay, so where was the Gais people from originally?
You tell me.
And they, and, and they connected to the Sabians, the South Arabians, to, according to academia?
You're, you're like clutching.
I'm not clutching, I'm laughing at you right now, I'm just fully not letting go of the guns here, I'm just. Cause you've put yourself in a hole, you know that, right? I hope everybody's listening to Callum and listening to me very carefully and understanding Callum's argument now. Like, this is why you're saying I'm clutching, because really, how can you get at me now? Go on, I'm listening. Go on, so you're gonna show me South Arabia was called Abyssinia, okay, I know it was called Abyssinia though. If anything, they probably even originated from there. So, yes, I'm still going with the argument that the Nagus, the Najashi was in East Africa and not. In South Arabia, no, and how I jumped from South Arabia to East Africa is this very same person. You put up that is spoken of as being a Nagus, somehow we can't find that same thing with Abraham. But yeah, that's, yeah, they would go in, yeah?
You are wild, you are so wild, you are like the wildest person.
So chat to me, man.
Okay, so, again, yeah, so let me, let me, let me see if I can, if I can get your argument, please. So, the sources say Abyssinia.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying Aksim.
Yep.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
And your reason.
So wait, wait, for me to clarify your argument, are you separating Aks? Are you separating the Ochsamite, Ochsamite people and the Habashi people? Are you saying they're two separate people? Is this what you're saying?
Two separate places.
Carry on, carry on, carry on, yeah, carry on.
Okay. So you're saying, yeah, even though the sources say they traveled to Abyssinia. You're saying it's to Aksim, and your reason for saying it's Aksim is because King Azar Noah. Is from Abyssinia, which is in South Arabia, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that the name A- Abyssinia is a designated area, it's a people. So wherever they are, it's like a rolling stone, wherever they are, they are, innit? That's what I'm saying.
Okay, you do realize that Aksim and Abyssinia are two separate places and are two separate people?
They're two, they're the same people, they are the same people, there could be, and it could be Habashi. Abyssinia people in North Africa or wherever, they could have all had a kingdom called Takaluku or for all I know. Yeah, they're all Habashi people at the end of the day, you know what I'm saying? The people who ruled, the, the difference with that argument is that the rulership in South Arabia. Was associated with those in East Africa, innit? You get me? So, yeah.
Okay, so, again, again, so they traveled to the land of Abyssinia. We know here is the land of Abyssinia, right? Even though the sources say they traveled to the land of Abyssinia. You're saying, no, it wasn't the land of Abyssinia here that they're talking about, it was actually Aksim.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, cool, cool.
And that's based on main scholarship, mainstream scholarship as well, you get me, not just off my own back, nope.
I don't, I don't even wanna argue with you, because that's, the, the, the audience wouldn't even know the difference of, of, of anything, so let me not even. Let me not even, this just, it's just wild, what you're saying is absolutely wild.
No.
You said mainstream scholarship, right? So what mainstream scholarship are you talking about?
Like mainstream scholarship, like the mainstream scholars that agree that the word Abyssinia is, is, is to do with the. The highly salacious people, you don't know that, even when the Greeks and all them peoples talking about Abyssinian. Went to do with them people.
Which people?
The, the Habashi people, the highly salacious people, the Amhar, or the, them people.
Well, uh, see, I think you really need to study history.
The Gais people are called the Gais people, yeah, the Gais people.
No, no, um, you need to study history, you really, really need to study history. And what you're practicing, like the rest of the Muslims are practicing, is something called anachronism.
Gone, so tell them, gone.
Yeah, just because something is known as, uh. Just because, ah, it, it's, I'm not even going, I'm not even going there, I'm not even going there, like. Let me speak in your language, let me speak in your language. Let me speak in your language.
It's not Abyssinians now, it's crazy, but, cool, let's don't see your fire for a second, yeah?
Wait, 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 let me speak in your language, yeah, you're Ghanaian, right?
You're gone.
Cool, now Ghana, is that, where, where is the original Ghana?
The original Ghana is in like Mauritania, Mali region.
Okay, so you, you realize as a Ghanaian, yeah, that the founders of your nation's naming, yeah? Co-opted another region, an empire, another empire for their own namesake, right?
Uh, the, the way you're wording it is based off ignorance, you know, because they actually named their nation. Based on identity and history. So how you're putting it, I can already gather you're coming from a place of ignorance and you don't really know what's going on, so. You're gonna say it's like that when it weren't like that, furthermore, when they coined the name, Western academia tried to debate. The Ghanaians, like Kwame Nkrumah and all them people there, yeah, um, JB Dankwa, they tried to debate them out of. The name saying you lot are capping, basically what you're doing.
Alright, so let me.
Fight for that name, so.
Let me get this.
They just named themselves, no, they debated that out.
The ancient territory of Ghana, you said was Mauritania and Mali, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the. So, modern day Ghana isn't the equivalent to ancient day Ghana, is that correct?
The location, no, but if you're talking about practices and customs and tradition, of course, it's the same.
I'm not gonna argue with you there, okay, so if you know that, nah, I'm never gonna, I'm not even gonna have that conversation, let me.
Come on, you're not, cause you caught, that one is not your field, my boy.
It's not my field, this, yeah, I just know there's, there's no point even having them type of conversations with me. So anyways, yeah, I'm, I just wanna get, so there you go, you believe, uh, for some reason that Aksim is actually Abyssinia. Um, and that.
Uh, it's only right though, this is like.
And that's based on.
University.
That's based upon, I don't even know what that is based upon, okay, cool.
I explained debunking, you're just, you're just saying why, why?
It's ridiculous to debunk in the first place.
And your one is more valid. Why is your one more valuable? And the mainstream narrative is us, how, like, how? That even from a logical point of view, how is your one making sense, bro? How, like, how, that even from a logical point of view, how is your one making sense, bro? That real talk, because let's just say, cool, let's say they were talking about South Arabia, yeah? Fam, I can still say, they, no, not, not let's say, let, let me listen to what you're saying, basically. So you're saying the South Arabia, right? I can still say they traveled through South Arabia to East Africa still. And it still don't matter, you know what I'm saying? Like, at the end of the day, how I understand the Habashia people. I understand the Habashia people to always have a stronghold in South Arabia. You get Africans, wait, wait, you get Africans that say, um, Queen of Shiba or the Shiba Empire, whatever, was in East Africa. I, I have always said this in South Arabia, always, 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 always. Can't even dash that smoke to me.
Anyways, I was gonna say, you, yeah, you're, you're a person that needs to actually get some, like, training in academic work.
Lad, I, I don't need no trading, I will be a layman till I die, listen, you're wrong.
I'm wrong.
You're wrong and strong, bro, I get you, you're trying to do your thing, I hear you, but, bro, I'm telling you, as a layman like me. I'm telling you what you're making, don't make sense, bro, but let's talk about, let's go into the. You're running, like this one.
I, I, I just wanna get, I, I'm gonna put this out there, right? When that befell the Muslims, the messenger of God commanded them to depart for the land of Abesinia. Yeah, remember this, uh, audience members, land of Abesinia.
Beg your pardon?
Not you, that's where we're going, there we go. This right here is the location of the land of Abesinia, for those people who don't know, okay? This right here is the land of Abesinia.
I can't see nothing. No tool.
You're right, you can't, let me just do this, share this tab instead. Let's see now, okay, yeah, so for those of you guys, yeah? Even, even, even the good brother, um, I can acknowledge is that this area here is the land of Abesinia, okay? Hold on, hold on, hold on, okay? We see here that Abesinia, the land of Abesinia is a very distinct place. Over here in, uh, King Azana's, King Azana's.
Wait, wait, re- rewind, you said where's the land of Abesinia again, for everyone to listen, listen, listen.
Right here, right here, right here.
Okay, yeah, go, 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 go.
All right, in the inscription, yeah, we see right here, right? Let me just go a bit bigger, Azana, King of Axum. King, and so it's, it's also saying he's the king of, um, Zuhima, okay? Cool, he's also of Raiden, also of the land of Habashia.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, I, Abesinia. So we see that there is Axum, which is one place. We have Hemia, which is.
I'm gonna cry. Go ahead.
We have Habashia and we have others, I'm gonna stop there, right?
Mm-hmm.
But yet. You want us to believe, even though it's separate. Axum is where he is, he's. Is another place where the Muslim record say they migrated to. Well, yeah, they're too, anyway, that's why I don't even argue with people who.
So I wanna ask you something, yeah, I'm not even gonna pull out this card yet, I wanna ask you something, yeah? That king, yeah, we just, just got spoken of, yeah? He li- listed all them areas, correct?
Yeah.
Oxum, that name and whatever naming after their kingdom, where that, when does it date to and how old is it compared to the name Habashia? Like, which is older?
You tell me.
I'm asking, how, how can you ask a question with a question, Callum, man, you're smarter than that uni boy.
Okay, I'll tell you, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, tell me.
Ah, come on, man, now, you're, you're, you're playing mind games there.
Nope, I don't know, you're making a point, I don't know, tell me.
I, I'm telling you that the name Habashia predates the name Oxum.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what does that mean?
And they come from the same stock of people. Do you object?
Okay, what does that mean?
I'm asking, do you object?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No, I don't know, go ahead.
Ah, then now that I rest my case then, innit, that's, that's, that's it, I'll leave it for there for now, innit?
Okay, cool, perfect, anyways, um, let's move on swiftly, yes, Sue, Christie. So, over here, there was a righteous king called the Nagus. This is something that you have a problem with, right?
Who Nagus?
Yeah, because.
Yeah, cool, let's get into that one, let me crush you down on this one too, so cool, cool, cool. You, you have said previously, yeah, that the Nagus. That the caliph is underneath the Nagus and the Emir, correct?
Yeah.
All right, yeah? So, w- we have that, th- this name Nagus, we have it today associated with the Oxymat people, yeah? So in my head and in my world, I hear your, whatever your view, but right now it's not that, innit? The name Nagus Najashi comes from the Oxymat people, yeah? The, the East African, the Habashia people, even though they still call themselves Habashia, they, they didn't say the Oxum. And then another people said Habashia and they got a little in-house note, they all agreed that they are Habashia, anyway. That name comes from the East African people, yeah? I want you to find me in their tradition where they have a caliph and a Emir underneath the Nagus. Please, sir. That's just, that's not even my way, I'm landing it, I'm landing on the next question.
Anyways, I'm not gonna do, um, wild goose chases.
No, it's not a wild goose chase, because you said the Nagus is over the Khalifa and Emir. So you're gonna have to demonstrate that, cuz remember, you can't, right now, it's impossible for you to demonstrate a Nagus dynasty in, in Yemen.
Let's, let's, let's just, let's just be, let's just do something easy, what does the word Nagus mean?
Ah, come on, Callum, man, Callum, you can't do that, you're running.
No, no.
You're running, no, no, no.
I, I'll answer for you.
Anything, I'll answer for you. Kingdom come, I'll answer for you, the kingdom, listen, bro.
I'll answer for you, okay?
Fine, no, no, I will answer this one, but you have to at least say you don't know, then we can move.
Okay, cool.
The, the Khalifa and Emir, can we find this office here underneath the Nagus? In the, in the, in the Aristotle, in the Arrow Cross, Aristocracy, I can't butcher the word. Can we find, can we find it there?
Yeah.
Show, please, provide, please, the Khalifa and.
I'm not going to, it's a waste of my time.
No, it's not a waste of your time, it's valid right now. Goes in line with, with. Etymology of Nagus and all of that, yes.
Because you, yourself, aren't doing the research, go and do the research.
I'm not, I'm, if you're talking about, am I, am I a person that is like on your caliber, sitting down reading books all day? I don't do that, bro, I'm not, I'm not that guy, I actually read books out of a hobby, just like you, but not on your level.
I'm from the streets too.
Yeah, but you probably grad, like, ten years ago, whatever you was doing, ten years ago, whatever I was doing, is, you was definitely doing positive things. I wasn't, do you get?
Nope, I was doing exactly what you did.
Was positive, positive, but, bro.
I was doing exactly what you did.
Not on the same path, broski.
I was doing exactly what you were doing.
Fine, fine, fair play to whatever you get me, but I was actually like, if I start revealing things, like, people's gonna be like, rah, now, okay, duh, 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 duh. Like, broski, I, I don't need to talk too much.
It's fine, I was, I was just. I was just balance.
I need to do this, I need to do that, fine, but it's like, bro, you need to answer this low level person. Because you're blatantly running, fam, you get what I'm saying? Why, how are you gonna tell me to do this and that, when I'm using your claims?
I'm gonna meet you, Mike.
Coming up with my, I'm not coming.
So anyways, right, so the question was, the question was, what is, what is a Nagus? The answer is a king. The question is, what is the word Khalifa mean? It means a governor.
Bro, you're running, man.
The next question is, what does the word Yeram mean? Has several meanings, it can mean commander.
This is disingenuous to the, the, the audience.
Anyways.
Tell people they need to go to, to, to get a bachelor's degree next.
All right, so, the question is, right, is a governor underneath a king? The, is a, is a commander underneath a king in a monarchy anyway? The, obviously, now the question is, you'll improve this to me, right? You know, let's, let's hope, cuz I'm, I'm sure we, we will draw up C I H five four one, let's, let's do that, cuz I love that one.
Bro, you can never show where Abraham's calling the goose, that's just, end up.
Do this quickly.
Just it, like, you know what I'm saying? And on top of that, the tuba, he had caliphs and emirs, why don't we talk about him? Why, why we, why we so focused on, why we so focused on the goose and that?
Anyways, anyways.
I don't know nothing, I'm a village boy from the gutter, I don't know nothing, I need more reading to do.
All right, anyways, um, as I said, yeah, wasting time. There is a current history of, uh, the same, well communities could have been districts. Habashia seems exclusive to that of South Arabia at the time. I do sit down and read books, lots of books, um, since Afro-Asiatic, Nagus, or Ras, or Leje. There you go, you man, you man again, innit?
Bro, the name Khalifa is in the Gais, bro, they've got the word in Gais, it's not there you go again, they've got the word Ras in Arabic. It's not there you go again. You have to actually provide.
Broski, meet your mic, meet your mic, I'm doing a show. Um, not high salacy, facts, Martina, uh, original Ghana, uh, Obankare. Some, a, uh, Transarant traders, Kunta Ganawa, uh, word Nagus in Arabic without a doubt. Uh, yep, he's wasting time, in the Quran verse two, two, four, eight, is basically the king. Uh, with the Ark of the Covenant, you should follow that in my words, and Ethiopia got the Ark of the Covenant, yeah? Um, yeah, so anyways, family, um, let me just make sure I post a link for you guys, so as I said, this is a study session. So any of you guys can come in, um, and present some information, man, I want you guys to really present some information. On here, um, cuz I'm tired of constantly doing shows, I was a breath of fresh air the other day, we had Joe say. Uh, Siam Car on and Cosmic breaking down some information, um, I went to. I went and I pulled up, um, what did I pull up? Where was it? Where is it? I had to pull this book out of the archives, you know, can you imagine? Jeez, The Cult of Ra, yeah, Sun Worship in Ancient Egypt by Stephen Quirk. Big boy scholar, big boy book, I had to pull that out of the woodworks. Um, and I was hoping that, you know, my good comedics can come in, cuz I was gonna throw some shots their way. Uh, and of course, you know when I throw shots, right? Cuz I don't have anything negative or bad. Towards anybody, I don't really care, innit, like, so I do it out of love, so we can actually, um, you know, sword sharpen sword. Still sharpen still, them ways there, you know, so, um, I really wanted to throw some shots at my comedic brothers. But y'all ain't even in here, so I can't even throw no shots at you, man, but yeah, it would be nice. And again, uh, for those of you guys who know, we've got the Abesinian Origins of Islam, the website. I need to be posting up some of these articles, I've been busy, um, doing some articles, actually, let me just see, let me see. Uh, so those of you guys who know, I usually have like loads of different. Documents lined up, Abesinia, Abesinian Islam, Mohammed Ibn Khuzza, Surafil. Co-opted narrative, Mohammed in comparisons, the mystery of C I H five four one, the Abesinian Origins of Islam, K's, Habashia. Broski, listen, I've got so many things lined up. I was even doing something on, uh, the title, uh, what was it? Ibn Abi Kabsha, and I was even showing you how that even relates back to, uh, the Abesinian Mohammed as well, like, so many of them. Like, so much stuff lined up, I can't wait to actually go through it with you guys, um, I think you guys would actually love it, let me see, what's this one? Uh, oh, this, this might be good, let me just see this weekly, um, what can we learn from this, uh, Pericape? Yeah, what can we learn from this Pericape? Boom, 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 Abraham promoted Mohammed into two offices. Number one, bishop of Abesinia, number two, governor of Maaj. Abraham commissioned Mohammed as an itiner- itinerant preacher and a pilgrimage propagandist, jeez. What can we know about his message, religious elements within Abraham's inscription, late Sabeek inscriptions, graffiti. Contemporary and near contemporary literature, so all these are the sources that I'm gonna be using. We understand from his message, what was our Abesini Mohammed's message? So his theology was that obviously Rahman was his deity. Political, uh, there was a synchronization of southern and northern Arabian monotheism. Uh, Rahman and Allah, so he synchronized to make them both be one and the same, cuz he was trying to bring the northern and southern tribes together. His Christology was no longer referred to as son of God rather than Messiah. Uh, language, introduction of Syriac religious vocabulary, let's see where is here? Scholars have noticed that the same innovative vocabulary in late Sabeek under Abraham Mohammed is also found in the Quran. Oh, I see where I was gonna go there, I was gonna drop something else, so that's found in the Quran. I was gonna say basically that finally put forward the narrative, is it possible? That the Quran actually goes back to our Abesinian Mohammed, since scholars are able to find every single. Not everything, but are able to show where the Quran's concepts, ideas, vocabulary. All traces itself back, uh, to, uh, sixth century or late sixth century, uh, Sabeek. Writings or inscriptions on the Abraham and obviously on the Mohammed as well, so. Ah, I couldn't wait, I can't wait, I'm gonna be doing some real good stuff on here, but anyways, let me get you guys in here, so we have. Uh, Pan-Molatoism, what's really good, fam?
How you doing, guy?
Good.
Good, and, uh, peace to the brother Akon Jabba, I don't wanna mispronounce the brother's name. Peace, King, uh, please excuse the wind, um, I, I'm not sure if you all know, I live in Puerto Rico, so, I mean, I'm at the beach, it gets windy down here. But I'll make it very brief, with all due respect, uh, to the brother Akon Jabba. I have to ask you with all due respect, now, when I see you on these panels, literally, virtually, every time I see you. You're speaking about the Arabian culture, you're speaking about Islam, which is, you know, descended from the Arabian. My question is, why don't you use the same energy to promote the Ashanti and Akon culture? The indigenous African cultures?
First of all, when you're saying all these panels, which panel are you, um, precisely talking about? Cuz I've been on other African panels, you know what I'm saying, and I talk black unity and I don't really talk about Abrahamic stuff, you know what I'm saying? So if you're gonna be saying that, then you must be basing it off this and I think Garfield. But even if I go into Garfield's platform, I, I, I defend the Israelite narrative, which is a Afrocentric thought. It's not really Arabic or, you know what I'm saying, so I'm kinda confused.
Yes, and, um, I don't wanna shout out all the concert creators that I've seen you on, but you mentioned, you mentioned two at least, but.
I'm not too, um, probably what, um, search for Haru, but he was trolling them, I came to troll the Hebrews. I was actually against them.
Yeah, so, back to the.
So them, so except for them. And that third one, that wasn't, I wasn't even emphasizing on Abrahamic religion. That led into another convo which I entertained, which was about black unity and FBA and, and even you can witness. Um, what I'm talking about, correct?
All right, uh, with all due respect, you might have forgot the question, the question is, why aren't you, I go make your point. Is the mic on me? The question is, yes, the question is, with all due respect, brother Akon Jabba. Why aren't you not only promoting the Ashanti, the Akon culture? Why aren't you an adherent to the indigenous traditional religion of the Akon people? Instead of worshiping a religion that was given to you by Arabians? People that might I add enslaved Africans to this day, actually. The, uh, Arabian slave trade, enslaved Africans to this day. Why don't you practice the indigenous African Akon, Ashanti, traditional religion?
The religion I practice is definitely the, the aspects of it, like worshiping. The religion I practice is definitely the, the aspects of it, like worshiping one god and all these other things. The, the principles is definitely Islamic. But the actual, when you're saying, um, my religion and why shouldn't I practice an Akhan religion? Reason why I don't practice Akhan religion is because I may know of it more than you. And there's certain aspects of it that goes against my hu- humanitarian belief system, shall I say? So.
Keep, keep breaking it down a little bit, just for the listeners, brother.
Oh, so for example, like sacrifices and, you know what I mean? Just other things I don't wanna get too deep into.
All right, I hear you. I caught you good.
You know what I'm saying? Put, putting curses and just basically having the power of another person's life in your hand and abusing it, in it. That that's all.
And now hit me out, brother. Now Mohammed literally married a six-year-old.
No, but my guy, he just jumped, he just jumped, bro. He's jumped into her next convo. I'm not trying to.
All right, but uh, one, one might get a time, brother. Please don't panic. The question is.
I'm definitely not.
Okay, so one might get a time, brother. Now Mohammed married a six-year-old and had sex with her when she turned nine years old. But you don't use that as an excuse to abandon Islam. So my question is, the Akhan traditional religion of the Ashanti. Is it against your moral standard as much as Mohammed marrying a nine, pardon me, a six-year-old? And having sex with a nine-year-old?
In the Con tradition, they've been doing things like that.
So, so you listen, so are you listening? Hold on, so, so. Yeah, exactly. So, so do you hear the question? So the question is, if you, so the question, hold on, hold on, brother.
You're gonna let.
But let's have some decorum.
You gonna let me breathe or is it I got you moment? I don't get what.
No, it's not about I got you. So just understand the question, the question.
Come on, Callum, man.
Hold on, hold on.
Don't panic, brother.
Boys. You two can get back in a minute. Um, let me just get, uh, the two brothers in first of all, to get there as quick say. So we have got, I need to know how to pronounce your name correctly, you know? Mark here. How do you pronounce your name properly, my brother? You're muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Uh, perfect, yeah, you said it, it's Mark I or Mark E.
Yes.
I see the problem with, with brother, yeah, greetings everyone, greetings, greetings brothers, yeah? The pleasure, yeah? Your brother Akhan, he doesn't wanna be put in a position where it seems like he's talking. Like he doesn't believe, right? Okay, I think that we have to blame the Sahaba and a lot of Islamic scholars. For putting information underneath, meaning not on the surface where we can access or know truth. I'm someone, I've read over a hundred books, nothing like you, but I still know nothing. You know what I'm saying, right? Um, so I'd say with the Ashanti tribe, they have a throne called the Sika Dua Kofi, right? And I think the Akhan have thrones as well. To follow Islam as well, or to be a Muslim or I think look, you go to Pakistan, so India is divided between Pakistan and Punjab, yeah? There's many things going on there. I think people will look at a brother, they say, you're not Muslim. How, how often do you pray? Do you, yeah? I don't wanna say too much, but I believe, um, most of Ghana, I'm Caribbean, yeah? Most of Ghana. Um, a lot of them, uh, within the, the Guinea that started the, another ground, started the Gold Coast and Ivory Coast. The Guinea pass through, I think everyone apparently leave it from the, around the Sahara, the eye or the Sahara Desert, yeah? Um, you had the Sunningka, it goes into O C two, two with the Akim, the Fanti, the Dingera. Uh, massive, a lot of colonization going on with the Aquamu and a lot of wars going on there. I, I studied that for, for heritage or to know where someone's from, that led me through, through everywhere, through everywhere. With the Bible, the Quran, as I, so Nigeria is more, more simplified. You've got the, the Ebo, where they've got the God's choke crew, Enesri, some of them believe they call them Gad, the Gad tribe. So you've got, um, obviously we spoke about the Orisha the other day. You know what I'm saying? That's, uh. So I'm out of road. Yeah, so the, the, um. The House of Philanthropy and, but anyway. Anyway, yeah.
How you doing?
I thought the Islamic Scott, um, the Quran or certain, certain things to hear Al Bukhari. Seas of Nectar, it's a bit based on what you're saying with history. May come across this in general, right? So I think, um, a lot of things in the Bible, we had the problem, someone was trying to play, uh, Moses to say, ah, this person was there at this time and date, right? So I think, um, history is always classed with religious beliefs or faith. You know what I'm saying? But I only wanna say words of work, you know what I'm saying? La peese lusi with place of the folks that are wounded. So I'm gonna say no more.
Love my broski. Well, dude, you said, huh? All right, we've got Afro Asiatic and then we're gonna get Jedi, Jedi, ooh, sugar, Jedi Diya up in the building as well.
How you doing?
It was good, what's good?
Uh, not a whole lot, just wanted to come through here and say, free Israel. The shit the Palestinians are doing to Israel is fucked up right now. So free Israel, God bless the American government and every penny that we're giving to Israel.
I love that.
Every single, every, every penny of mine needs to go to Israel.
I love it. My brother, true legal, ah, yeah.
Well, there's no, what do you mean trolling, dude? Every penny of my hard earned money needs to go to Israel to bomb people. That, that's what needs to happen. Uh, thank you, Israel, for giving me everything I've ever known. You control the world and I appreciate it and free you, free you, Israel.
Oh, sugar. All right, Afro Asian, what are you saying to me, King?
All right, peace, peace, brother Kalan.
Yes.
How you doing, man? Been a while.
I know, man, what's good?
I'm all right, bro. Yeah, man, I, I've been, uh, getting a take on your conversation. What do you think about the formula, uh, that they talk about with the Bismillah? And Rahman, uh, in South Arabia with Abraha and the, uh, other guys? And then the union, uh, with the northern Arabians?
Yeah, let me just pull that up right now. Give me a sec. There you go. So, uh, if you guys wanna know what my brother's talking about, it is this. Particular, um. Uh, particular article or journal, uh, Jerusalem Studies in Arabic and Islam by Ahmed Al Jalad. A pre-Islamic Basmala, reflections on its first epigraphic attestation and its original significance. So, you know, already, I know I've brought this up to you guys already. Hopefully you guys have read it. And in there, we literally see, uh, you know, the Basmala being mentioned, Bismillah, Rahman. And then you got Rahim, uh, right there. It was initially translated like that, uh, but with Ahmed Al Jalad, he gives a different translation. Uh, instead of it saying that, it says, uh, give mercy to us or something along those lines. Um, but yeah, let me get back to what you were saying. Which was this point here, which I loved, I think I highlighted it, uh, recently as well. Says here, no, is this it? Let me just quickly see. Page eighteen, where is my page eighteen? There you go. Cool. Um, okay, where is clear however, is that Rahman was not used in pre-Islamic times in North Arabia. Okay, Crop suggests that the element Al Rahman was originally understood as a divine name in the Basmala. In opposition with Allah. In this light, I would go on to suggest that the Basmala had a theological and political dimension. The invocation seek, seeks to syncretize the two main monotheistic poles of Arabia. By equating North Arabian Allah with South Arabian Rahman. The regional and perhaps confessional difference between the two is echoed in the Quran. And say, call upon Allah or call upon the Rahman, whichever you call upon, or he's are the best names. So yeah, my brother, go ahead, what was you saying again? Let me just get back to what you're saying.
Yeah, well, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the Quranic formula as well as the, uh, Bismillah in the Quran is a, is a formula. And is related to, uh, a pattern or code of the number nineteen. I'm not, uh, sure if you are familiar with Rashad Khalifa's, uh, work on the number nineteen. And, uh, missing Bismillah from Sura number nine. But I don't find it, I don't find any discomfort with, uh, seeing it in South Arabia. But, uh, I do think that, um, it shows a bit of, uh. I would say, when we look at the Quran, we see, uh, Rahman, uh, and Ra- Rahim and Rahman. Are the most oft repeated, uh, verses. And then we see it there in, uh, South Arabia. I think it's, it is, uh, could be a syncretism. But I think, uh, it speaks to a deeper history between the two communities. That is, that goes further back into a Nubian, uh, complex. Um, you know, I don't, I don't wanna, uh, say too much from the point, but I think that history goes back to, uh, earlier, uh, Nubian complex. If you are familiar with the Nubian complexes of, uh, Imran, South Arabia, the four, uh, that is spread out. Nubian type.
Hey, um, for me personally, I think that the, you know, the epithet or, you know, the Rahman El Rahim. As he, you know, I think it's Manfred Crop that basically points it out. Uh, that basically it is a doublet. I believe it's a doublet that is traced back to, uh, Ethiopia. And with inside of the G, there you go, here it says here, uh, Manfred Crop in his masterful analysis of the stylistic point connects a double. Who are biblical antecedent, um, perhaps even modeled upon the Ethiopic doublet. A double epithet, uh, Mashari wa Masthal. Merciful and gracious, the choice of the words Rahman in Arabic, which is an unexpected rendition of the Hebrew. Um, can be explained if we assume a starting point similar to the attestation in the previous, in the present inscription. The tripartite Islamic Basmala was perhaps not developed as a direct translation of comparable tripartite invocation. But reflect the expansion of an earlier bipartite formula as Crop explains. The new invocation simultaneously unites both themes of the monotheistic God in Arabia. And creates a stylistic connection with other monotheistic traditions with a double epithet. These observations, uh, complements new works.
Hey, hey, Callum, so I wanna ask you, yeah? First of all, Crop, are you taking that view what he just said regarding the Bismillah? You take that via?
Yeah, that's how I do.
Ah, cool. So Crop, does he? Hey, listen to, listen to what I'm saying now. Does he say what you say regarding like with Abraha? Like, obviously not a lot of people say what you're saying with Abraha, but does he have a view like, yeah? Not a, not a good, um, chronological story or da, 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 blah, blah. Like, does he object? Is he critical?
He is in the fields of Ethiopian studies, I believe. Uh, so he's not really into Islam.
Oh, so he has no Islamic works. So if I attack, not, I'm not really trying to attack that, but I wanna know if you're pick, picking and choosing basically. Cause if he's got a narrative, I just wanna know if he agrees with you in it. Because basically, if we take what you just said now. With, um, uh, um, a name being translated into another language, that's basically the same I could say with the Nagus. And, um, other titles that how comes that didn't get translated or why is it? Do you know what I mean?
No, I don't, sorry, I don't.
Basically, then the, the name, the title Nagus, it didn't get, um, translated into, um. Arabia as Malik. Yeah, even though it can be as well, even though it can be understood as Malik. We have the name Najashi in that region. So when you're trying to say that Abraha was a Nagus. How comes we don't find that same thing? Where he's enabled. Um, and Nagus, even me, I'm, are you following with me basically?
I, I, I follow you, I follow you.
I kinda get what I'm saying.
I do, I do. And I would really love to point you to, you know, scholastic work to go and read, but I don't think you will read it. Um, so I'm gonna simply say this to you. That Abraha decided to write his stuff in, uh, late Sabaic, in, in Sabaic language.
Okay, go on.
Cool.
I already gathered that, yeah?
Cool, all right. Yeah, so now.
Go on.
I'm gonna ask you this question and just, just, just to show you something.
Yeah.
So in terms of, he, so he writes himself as a Malik, yeah? Which is a king.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in Sabaic.
Yeah.
Now, do you think the majority of his Abyssinians spoke Sabaic or they spoke another language?
Based according to what you, you're saying, they definitely spoke a different language from, um, the Habashia people. I mean, not, not Habashia, so they definitely spoke a different language from the Oxymite, yes, sir, my bad. So, um. They definitely spoke different from the Arabs, but I'm just fast tracking you, basically. They definitely, based on what you're saying, the Oxymite and Habashia people ain't the same people. So I'm fast tracking it, by the way. So, um, so yeah, so you can't even make them.
Love the way.
The same, cause I know where you're going, I know where you're going.
I love, I love the way you choose to listen to what I say. And then try to, but anyways, it doesn't make no difference, right? So let's just say these Abyssinian people, yeah, they spoke Gais.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the word for a king in Gais?
Is Nagus.
Cool.
Yeah.
So is it possible that those Abyssinians who spoke Gais.
Yeah.
Called, uh, their king by the Gaisy title?
Um, I doubt with the case of Abra, I fully doubt because the title Nagus.
Why do you doubt that?
Because the title Nagus itself is, um, I think it's not, you can't, you can't self proclaim that for number one. That's just something that, um, I can't so hold and name you that. That, that's a high respected title, Nagus. So he would have, they would have probably had another terminology for king at their time. You know what I'm saying? And you can't really base it off, um, the Oxymite people. Like what I'm saying is.
Bro, okay, let me, let me just say.
Linguistically, you can't really.
I don't even have time to listen to it. I really don't have time to listen to this, because you're just making stuff up, okay?
How?
Bro, how, how do you say king in your language?
Bro, you've got, you've got a couple ways to say king in my language.
But answer that though, we would like to know.
Wait, 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 no, wait, wait, before you go, anyway, wait. How am I that? How am I wrong? Because you're able to show king.
Can you answer that though?
Being called Nagus, yeah?
Can you answer?
Where we have no records at all, zero, you know? Hear me out, you know? Zero records of Abraha being called a Nagus.
No, you don't.
What you're doing, I promise, and I know I'm not chatting rubbish. I'm from the ghetto, whatever, yeah? Didn't go school, cool. Bro, I'm so confident that there is zero inscriptions out there or evidence out there to say that he was a Nagus. All you're doing is nothing but speculation, like on a scholastic level, which is.
But brother, how, how do you say king in your language though?
You know what I'm saying? It's plausible. You know what I'm saying? So, no, I will answer that and I'll answer you later, Malato.
No, it wasn't my question, the host asked.
I, I, I don't, I don't feel to answer your question.
No, the host asked, I didn't ask that.
The host, the host, the host moved from that.
No, no, I haven't moved from you moved from it. I asked you, how do you say king in your language?
You've got a couple ways to say king in my language.
Just give me one.
All right. Yeah.
Okay, so is it possible that? Myself referring to Nana as king in the English.
Yeah.
Is it understood that I'm talking about Nana if I called him the king?
If you called yourself Nana in English.
No, 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 I'm talking about your king. There's, I'm just saying, let's just say in the times of kings, right? And we know in your language that he's called Nana. But I called him king. Do we understand that we're speaking about the Nano?
It's based upon that person saying you calling who king? The person who's naming themselves king, are they from that people of the Nano?
Never mind.
No, you said, you said the king and you said the Nano.
It's fine, I don't want, I don't wanna talk about it, I don't even.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a quick question. Um, do, do, do we doubt that the origin of the word Nagus is Arabic? Uh, are.
Uh I'm not saying it's Arabic, bro.
No, I'm, I'm saying it is, I'm saying it is Arabic, the origin of the word Negus is Arabic.
Then, then you're not helping Callum out, bro.
I'm not trying to help the brother out, I'm just trying to join the discussion family, that's all.
Oh, 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 oh.
You know, but.
I am based, I, I don't say that, but if that's what you're saying, then it definitely goes against him again. Because in the Abraha inscriptions, we, we see the word Nagus being used. We never see Abraha claiming himself to be a Nagus, bro, never ever. And in Ethiopia, in, in Gais language, when they say God, they call him Amlac. The root of it is king and rulership, even within their language. So if we really wanna go into, we don't know what they called kings back then in sixth century, especially in Southern Arabia. Because in Southern Arabia, you don't get the Ghee speaking people like that anymore, do you know what I'm saying? And there's different dialects with, within a tribe of people. Not everybody's gonna use the same wordplay for a king. Some people may differ, you know what I'm saying? So he, obviously, he's gone to school, he's educated. So he's gonna be, he's gonna move a certain way, but what I'm saying is not wrong, I'm definitely not wrong. We have no inscriptions of Abraha being called a goose. Furthermore, we haven't, he's not even recognized as such.
Where, where'd you get that from?
Bro, this is, find me some.
No, no, I'm asking.
Actually, you know what, you know what, you know what? I've got one source in it, but I'm not gonna say for now in it, I'm just gonna keep it there for now in it.
I'm asking you, where did you get that information?
Am I wrong?
Where did you get that from?
I'm not, fam, mainstream, bro, mainstream.
Where from?
It's main, Wikipedia, I got it from Wikipedia.
Wikipedia doesn't say that.
Yeah.
So where'd you get that from?
I've got it from there.
No, you got it from me.
Well, I got what from you?
That statement.
What statement?
I know for a fact.
What statement, wait, wait, what, what statement?
That there is no inscription that calls Abraha a Nagus.
I swear on everyone's life in my family dropped dead right now. God cursed me when I wake up in the morning. I never got it from you.
Okay, so. So let me ask you a question. Have you gone through, have you gone through all of Abraha's inscriptions?
I've not gone through exactly all of them, but I've gone through a nice few, I've gone through a nice few.
Wait, wait, relax, bro. I'm, I'm, I, I ain't got time, I ain't got time, I'm trying to run a show here. So if you haven't gone through all of them, how do you know that information?
Because I'm very confident that if this was the case, it would have been the narrative.
So it's a belief?
It's not a belief, it's what I know, unless you're gonna show me what I don't know, which you can't do, because I know you can't. This is my point. This is my point.
So the thing is, you haven't gone through.
I kind of now, well, I, I'm finding this funny, you know, because you're the.
I'm gonna have to meet you. I, I don't even have the time, I don't have the patience and time for this nonsense. Anyways, um who was it that said something? Someone said that Nagus um comes from Arabic, yeah. Um, why'd you say that?
Um because of the, the linguistics, um says that uh the, the word Negus comes from Arabic. Ross, Negus, um a few other terms, but Ross and Negus are definitely. Uh Arabic or Hebrew origin, linguistically.
Where'd you get that from though?
Uh that's a, that's a, that's a simple uh Wikipedia search that uh talks about how the word Negos comes from uh Arabic. Or Hebrew, Negos.
Let me do one better than Wikipedia.
And uh brother, are you able to say what these words mean in Arabic?
Uh Negus, Negus would be uh king, Negus means king um or ruler.
In Arabic?
Well, and um I know that in uh the way that they use it in East Africa right now.
Well, that's what I'm asking, if they came from Arabic, what do they mean in Arabic? And I'm not trying to put your back against the ropes, I'm genuinely curious.
Right, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. But I think that there's a relationship also with Negus and Nahas. Because the H and the G are interchangeable in uh East Semitic uh languages. So the Negus and the Nahas would be uh, would have all uh root, share all root together. Negus and Nahas, N H S, which is a term that means Nubian.
Nahas. I, I, that's, I've heard of that before, that's, that's, it's not factual, but I've definitely heard that um theory before.
Oh no, it's facts, I mean, well, I won't say it's facts, but it's scholarship out on it, you know?
Hmm Afrose- um Afro-American centric scholarship based on that, not ac- Western academia, no way.
And just real quick to the brother's point, when he was talking about Islam, um I don't know if the brother is aware. But when we look at West Africa right now, Ibrahim Chiyori, Esimi Goita, Abdul Rahman Chana. They are all Muslims and they are the leaders in the world of Pan-Africanism, right? One second, one second, hold on, one second. I know, hold on, just one second. I'm just saying, those are the leaders of Pan-Africanism on the planet right now.
And uh let me ask, I hear you, brother, and uh let me ask you this as a response, and it'll be brief. Uh I'm asking a simple question. Don't you think that it'd be more conducive to African unity? If Africans renounce and denounce the foreign religious practices that they have? And instead choose to adopt indigenous African religions?
I mean, that would be a matter of opinion, but in light of recent developments, we can see that Islam is not mind-numbing. To African suffering when we look at the movement of the administrations of Mali, Niger, Burkina Faso. One second, brother, one, one second, brother, alright, one second, brother. Who are dominated by Muslims and uh they are definitely leading Pan-Africanism right now. They are de-dollarizing, they are decolonizing, they are taking over their resources and uh they are definitely Muslims.
And uh let, let me respond to that, and uh let's have a dialogue and I won't preach to you, you don't preach to me, please, let's not go on monologues. The question is, well, I'll make it a statement. Now, I'll tell you one mind-numbing aspect of Islam experienced by Africans. Literally, the Arabian slave trade is taking place in Africa right now, where you have Arabians selling. And buying Sub-Saharan Africans under the same Suna as these so-called black Muslims. So the question is, and I'll land my uh plane with this, think about it like this. In Saudi Arabia, there are no Saudi Arabians that practice an African religion because they have pride and dignity in themselves. The question is, why are you as Africans? Why don't you have their same pride and dignity in yourselves and drop their foreign religion that enslaved your ancestors? And your cousins today?
Yeah, when we, when we look at an objective history of Islam in Africa, we see Islam flower in Mali. We see in Timbuktu, we see Islam flower in Martania and different areas of Africa. We just have to be honest, even the slaves, hold on one second, even the slaves that were brought over to America were literate. Because of their Islamic backgrounds, we have the narratives of Umar Ibn Sa'id, of Ayub. Of uh Rahman, we have those narratives of Tarubi Fube, Fulani Muslims. Who were black and literate and uh basically uh resisted colonialism and oppression. And it was, a lot of it was because of their Islamic background, their literacy.
Yes.
Let's go point for point, brother. It'll be brief, but let's go point for point. Well, let me respond to it, brother, then I'll pass the mic, it'll be so brief. And them same exact African empires that you named, such as Mali, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They, when I say they, I'm speaking about the African Muslims, they were enslaving Africans that were not Muslim. So brother, this is not something to take pride in, brother. You are commemorating Muslim empires. That enslaved African people because they were not Muslim, because they did not practice a foreign religion. Have some pride and dignity in yourselves as Africans.
Africans were already enslaving people who were of other tribes, that was a common practice.
But that doesn't make it alright.
Brother, one second, brother, I'm not saying it's alright, but what I'm saying is Africans were already enslaving other Africans. Africans were enslaving Nubian tribes in the eastern desert of Kimit at one time. I'm not, oh, I'm, I'm just, you know, I just wanna be clear and keep it objective and balanced. Africans were enslaving Africans who they were at war with. So uh I don't think that that's really a valid uh point to make, because.
Well, I think the host's trying to get in, let the host speak.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. I was just gonna bring up like, you know, the dictionary of where Nagus comes from, uh or Nagus, sorry, comes from, it's all there anyway. I don't know if anybody has a Leslaw comparative dictionary, um you know, you really wanna get lower bay information. Obviously, it shows you here. Um you know, just the languages, the way it comes from, I ain't got time to even deal with this really and truly, but. In your own times, anyone uh who has time, go ahead, go and research it, see where, you know, the language comes from. Is it really from uh Arabic? You've got a term here called Nagasha, which means to pursue, press, drive, etc.
Did I miss, what did I miss?
Then you have another one where it literally tells you Arabic, uh they use the term El Najashi, clearly a loan word, king of Ethiopia. Uh and then et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh in the Ethiopian uh Tekriniya, Nagza. Means to become a king or to rule, uh TNA Nagasa, Amaharek Nagasa. And probably also the other languages passed into the Koshitic, uh Bill Nagas, et cetera, so. Um no, so technically speaking, the term Nagus isn't actually a, or Nagashi. It doesn't derive from Arabic, I think, for those of you guys who know a little bit of it. You can literally go into the Arabic dictionary and it will show you that Na doesn't actually come from there. Uh their term for Najashi is something completely different from the, the uh Gais term for Najashi. Just to put it out there real quickly.
You see when you said an article, you see when you said an article of a word, when you said Abu Qasim? That's technically the same thing with Najashi, what's going on with Najashi, it's like an article, artifact word.
And this is the problem with, with Africans that practice Islam. They want to give credit to Ar- Arabians for African creations. We're hearing it live, the black Muslim. Well, brother, one might get a time and I'll pass the mic right back to you, it'll be one sentence. The black Muslim is so indoctrinated by the foreign religion of Islam. That the black Muslim goes out of his way to lie and accredit Arabians for African creations. No, the word Nagus does not descend from any Arabic word. Stan calls it Africans.
Yo, yo, Callum.
Can I ask a question right quick?
So you see, so.
Is anybody in here African American?
Yes.
I'm a Malato American, yes.
Yes, I'm African American, yeah.
So are we really saying that, that Negus came from Arabic or Middle Eastern?
I'm, I'm definitely not saying that. I'm definitely not saying that at all.
Yeah, I'm a brother saying that, I'm a brother saying.
Can Callum agree with me that it's an artifact word, basically the same language he used regarding the name Abu Qasim? Like the same kind of thought, can that be applied to the Najashi, the, the name Najashi, the title?
I have a source on it, actually, uh if I could do a screen share.
Callum, I'm asking you.
If I could do a screen share.
I don't know what you're trying to do, but.
Video is there, the, when, when.
I, I know, I know I said, but I don't know what you're, how you're trying to um relate, so no.
Basically, yeah, see the same understanding you have with Abu Qasim. Can that be understood with Najashi? I'm asking you. Not for validation, cause I know what it is, I'm asking you, can you agree?
Agree? What? Try, try, I don't, try to make sense. I, I don't understand what you're saying, basically.
I think, I think we pretty much stay in a two different cultures.
Yeah, so the, 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 the part, the, the word you said that the Arabs borrowed. Probably it meant something else in their language, but it meant this in another language, basically, it's not originally Arabic. This is what you was trying to go about, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so I'm saying it's the same, I'm saying now, it's not even a question, I'm saying it's the same thing. Really, it's really that with Najashi than Abu Qasim, what you was trying to put.
That it is an.
Is it of the same culture?
It's a Gaisi word that came into the Arabic language, then became Arabized. And is now uh a, a proper noun within side of the Arabic language as a king of Ethiopia. If you're saying that, then yes, I agree with you.
Say that again, repeat, repeat that again.
Adah.
No, no, repeat that again, repeat that again.
If you're saying that the word Nagus or Nagashi or Najashi is originally an Ethiopian Gais word.
Yeah.
That came over into the Arabic language.
Yeah.
Became Arabized.
Yeah.
Right, took on an Arabic meaning.
Yeah, took on, yeah, go on.
And now it is a proper noun within side of the Arabic language. I would agree with you.
Ah, don't say a word then, that's, that's cool then.
I have a source for the term Nagach, if y'all wanna take a look at it, for Nahas, for the term.
You know you cut yourself, you know that, right?
Alright, that's cool, with, with all the people.
I'm just saying, didn't it, but yeah, go on.
Let's just, let's quickly go over here, this is the uh. Right now, we're on the Lanes Lexicon, we've typed in, you know, uh right here, as you can see. We've typed in, uh this is the Nun, this is the. I remember the, how do you even say the Arabic letters properly, but anyway, NJ and then SH is right there. And then we can see that it has its own meanings within side of Arabic over here. But then it has, hopefully, it should give us the uh word for king over here, give me a second. Okay, name of the king of the Abyssinians, like as one says, Najashi. Nagasi and whatever, an Abyssinian word, see, says here, an Abyssinian word or a certain king of the Abyssinians. Uh whose name was. Astama, uh is commonly said, but authors differ respecting his name. Uh that El Najashi is in Coptic, uh meaning a gift. Or originally the proper name of an individual afterwards, a common title. So um in the Lanes Lexicon, they give credence to it being an actual uh Ethiopian word or an Abyssinian word. Uh and it was used as a proper name for the king of Abyssinia. Okay, cool, let me just see what you guys are saying. Stop sharing and who wanted to show something?
Uh that's Afro, Afro.
Go on, Afro-Asian.
Thanks, bro. Uh should be up, should be up. Uh this is the British, uh can you guys see it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is British, British Museum publication on Egypt and Sudan. One, the fourth cataract and beyond proceedings of the twelfth international conference on Nubian studies. Edited by Julie R. Anderson and Derek A. Wellsby. I'm just gonna do a quick search of the word uh Nahes, so we can uh get straight to the. Meat and potatoes, um. I'm gonna move down, this is page five oh eight. Um I'm gonna start, uh I don't wanna take too long, but excuse me. Uh I'm gonna start from right here, if y'all guys can see my cursor. Uh pacify the Hesi, H T P, were employed in the pyramid town Senefru. And Dasher, they are thought to be Nubian sea group stock, Mura nineteen ninety-six. Yet Nubian artifacts are absent in Dasher. Also, fourth dynasty execration texts around Kufu's pyramid. Give Egyptian names to Nahesi people long before Nubia fell under Egyptian rule. Abu, Abu Bakar and Osing nineteen seventy-six. Early dynastic occurrences of Taseti, Tarnahesi and gold countries have created. A confused melting pot of presumed Nubian natives, though then gold countries were northern ones. Fourth dynasty Nahesi land was devastated, seven thousand prisoners, two hundred thousand livestock were taken. However, as Nubian natives pop- populations was at the time sparse, the picture does not fit. Um uh the small Nahesi kingdom round of virus during the fourteenth dynasty, Btech nineteen eighty-four. Could undermine the Nubian stock theory. could undermine the Nubian stock theory. Kamos complains that there were two foreign rulers, one in Navarus and another in Kush.
Before you continue, what was the point you're going to prove? Because I'm just realizing I'm running out of time.
Okay, okay, I'll go right down here to Nahesi. What they talk about within Nahesi, uh, the word that is related to the term Nagash. Okay, uh, Nahesi, each man has his slice of this Egypt, Redford. It is not clear if the Nahesi in Blackland ruler or Kush delta Nahesi kingdom Nubians. Territorial extent of Hixos rule is unclear, Redford. Interestingly, the treasurer who engraved Kamos victory stiller named also Nahesi, fifth dynasty Nahesi Giza and ranking people Sinnev held office of treasurer. Was he a native pastoral new, new kingdom? Nahesi villages are tested in the Delta Tenome, upper middle, middle Egypt near Hercolopolis and Syria. Nahesi are often associated with Semites and are found everywhere from Kush to the Delta. Definitely, that's a funny, Nahesi, the house of the cow, the Nahesi settlements name. I can't read this sentence, but we can see Nahesi here at the end of the sentence would prove a much discussed Semitic association. The name could have a Semitic origin derived from either Hebrew, Nahes, copper, bronze, brass, coal, serpent. Daring, the binder and related words and Arabic Nahes, dark color. Hence copper color or related to copper mining and through semantic extension, any metal mining. Lupkins, a possible derivation from the Akkadian Naheshu in extraction. Lapenio sees them as Asiatic Benjamin from the Middle Euphrates, later Midianites or Arabian Karabari tribes. They go on to talk about uh, the biblical texts as well, but I know brothers don't accept that. But they do quote biblical Panahas Exodus six twenty-five, numbers twenty-five, seven, the grandson of Aaron. That's according to uh, this paper, uh, that is uh, well, we, we read the uh, top. But this, this word right here, if, if we know the, the Torah. We see this word interchange with the G. The G is uh, and we see the word Nagas. And we see it mentioned when Moses uh, talks about the bronze serpent. Or the serpent that he has, he refers to it as a Nagash uh, in reference to bronze or copper. Copper smelting. So we see evidence that the term Nagas, Nahas is of Arabic or Hebrew extraction. You know, I just wanted to demonstrate that point, brother Kalim. I appreciate you letting me share, bro.
You. But if it changed to Nagash, then it'll still be a different word, depending on the culture that's used it. So even if that person that says Nahash was not an Egyptian word, it was actually a Semitic word. Then you have to say, okay, that's a fact. But if you say you changed the H to a G and it was a whole different culture. Then you can't say, well, that word it came from because it changed this letter. Like if I say Zesus, right? And it starts with a Z. Um, but if you go to Roman languages and it says Jesus with a G. Does it mean that it came from Greek? Hmm, not necessarily. It could be, hey, this is, this is what they use to change. Uh, to make their own culture similar to the Greek language. Or it could be, hey, I actually did change a Greek word into a Roman language. So really dependent on the other culture that uh, really put that word Nagash out there.
Yeah, I would say that in order to really, you know, try to prove that point, you'd have to do something uh, which is called historic. Historical comparative linguistics. Uh, that's a field of studies to show, um, you know, how a language, one language with another language uh, interrelates with each other. How it changes uh, and trace the chronology of that change if there is a change, full stop. Because we're jumping from uh, how can I put it? We're jumping from ancient Egyptian. Uh, let's just say three thousand BCE or four thousand BCE. And then we're jumping to, you know, modern day, not modern day Arabic. Let's just say we're going back a thousand years. You know, you have to do a whole analysis on that. We can't just simply say because they look the same or sound the same, that they really are um, actually the same. Um, but yeah.
We take from the surface and say, hey, this, it came from a West, I mean, uh, African American culture. And this is where you got the wear from.
Yeah. So yeah, family tree, um, I'm literally running to the end of this particular show. Unfortunately, I'm upset with this because I'm really enjoying the show. But of course, you know, you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna continue the show off air. And um, I will not be here uh, technically. And I can't even pass on administration roles to anybody else to get everybody in. So those of you who are here now, uh, you will be here uh, until, you know, whenever you want to leave. Uh, for everybody else who wants to get into the show, uh, please hit the link. Ooh, sorry, I was thinking I was sending you the link. That's not the link. Yeah, hit the link. Uh, so you guys can come on in and have conversations with one another. Uh, the link has been shared, but I'm gonna be shutting off soon. Uh, is there anything that somebody wants to say in the last thirty seconds? Like, you have thirty seconds to say something. Uh, starting from, let me start with you again. Let's go, Akano.
Yeah, but he, it, he, it, he, it dialogue, should I say? But yeah, man, I think I done my bit. I think you couldn't prove your point. And you had to twist and dance and, you know, but we move on, man. We move on, we move on, we move on.
Indeed, indeed. Unfortunately, I couldn't do it. Alright, thank you. Uh, stay there. Let me just make sure I get everybody else on. Um, Pa, no, yeah, Pan Malato, what are you saying to me, King?
Yes, uh, thanks for having me up and this will be brief. All majority black countries must ban Islam immediately. The Arabs are not your daddy. You are your own daddy. You have a black African daddy. Much love.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you. Stay there. I'm just making sure I get everybody uh, in here. So the last say, uh, market, market, are you there?
Um, that is, I'm sorry. Um, but it's probably the interesting how uh, how some would have believed.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to mute you because I apologize. You're still there, stay there. Um, but I can't hear you because the wind is doing a madness, yeah? Um, I'm gonna get you all in soon. Let me just give me a hot second. Afro Asiatic, what are you saying to me, King?
Yeah, I just wanted to say peace to you. Uh, good to see you and thank you for letting me join the bill, bro.
Definitely, man. I always appreciate you in the comment section and like you're always dropping gems and uh, you know, asking really thought provoking questions. So salute to you, my guy. Um, alright, let me get uh, Jamel, what's up, King?
Yo, so, so, what's up, man? Um, I'm pretty much, you know, I was actually the first one here. Um, I end up losing connection and uh, I end up coming late, but uh, I guess next time we can go ahead and chop it up. And I, I really appreciate you having me. And um, I'm here to just to represent the uh, you know, the Egyptian Israelites, the guys who think the Israelites are the chemetics. And stuff like that. So we are in a whole different uh, realm of uh, literature. So like, um, let's just give up big ups to that. I also want to big up to, you know, the country and of course you uh, for, you know, allowing uh, be on a platform and uh, you know, speak my little piece.
Alright, Josie, I don't know why you're hiding now, you know?
Yeah, what's up?
Come, come back on, you know, he's saying to me. He said, oh, sugar, that, oh, sorry about that. Let me just get you back on stage. Yo.
Yeah, what's up? Nagus and Nahes is the same word. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, come on, man. You know, we're, we're reaching the end of the show, man. We, we can tackle that off air.
Nah, but that's wrong. And he knows that's wrong. That word that he used, the word he talking about refers to something like a serpent. Nahes refers to people. He should know better. And Nahes is nothing close to any Hebrew word. He shouldn't know that.
Let's, let's hold up for off air, okay? Alright, Asa, what are you saying to me?
He said Nahesi is the Nahi bird and not the, alright, yeah, yeah. I, I didn't get to catch this show. I gotta rewind it, but I'm just giving the shout out to the chat. Shout out to uh, Mongo Orthodox Akani. And of course, Big Brother Kalim, man, we always gotta be here. I'm in the back, I'm in the back.
Go. Um, and of course, like, I'm gonna bring everybody else in the background back on. I will be in the background, but I'm gonna step out for a minute, but I'll be in the background. So if you guys are saying anything, I may be able to listen in. Um, and of course, yeah, I'm coming for my chmedics, yeah? Because it's time. Chiffy's awful knocks more.
Yeah, definitely time.
So, um, I'm gonna be, you know, let me think, let me think, let me see what I can do quickly.
What you got there, my boy?
I already know, man. You know, I already know who I'm repping. I'm repping Ra all day long.
Hey, you're the Ra, the Ra Nation, okay?
I didn't even know. I'm trying to throw something here at somebody, but I don't even know what I can throw he at, but yeah.
Throw fireball at somebody, just throw. Who, who, who's the brother? He said he was a, it, uh, Israelite Egyptian.
Uh, me, right here.
Okay, that's an interesting take, brother. What, what's your uh?
Wait, 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 come on, I already said it.
Yeah, we could talk, we could talk about it.
You know, we're gonna go off here, we could talk about it. Up in the building, saluting the panel and that. Oh, man. Every time, every time. Guys, if you lot have enjoyed the show, yeah, please hit up the like button. Um, and show your support. And again, like, just make sure you hit us up inside of the comment section as well. Um, Asa, I don't know, man, I need to get at you with something comedic so we can actually stimulate the audience who are comedics to learn something. So I need to find something that, um, I can.
I'm comedic.
Let's go, uh, let's do comedic Bible study.
Yeah.
We do some comedic Bible study. I think that'll make them go crazy, especially watch, watch my take on how I, how I break it there.
You know, so I need, I need something. I don't even know. I'm trying to look right now. Give me a second. I wanna, I wanna, I mean, you're gonna be debating on. But it's hard, it's hard, um.
We could do a friendly, it ain't nothing.
It's hard. Um, what was it?
Little spar session.
No, I don't even think I have anything to even just like go at you against, like literally. It's gonna be different. You're just gonna have to say something, yeah? You say something. The contrary, like viewpoint, regardless of if I, I believe it or not, okay?
If the Bible copy Kemet.
The Bible stole. Watch this. The Bible stole from Kemet. Hold on, when I bring my source, it's gonna be Islamic and Arabic, and he's gonna say exactly what I said.
Alright, let me do this with you, yeah? Because I, I will argue against that personally, yeah? But because the Bible is like a library, it's a collection of books. Choose one of those books, just one. What, what book are you gonna say copied or stole from Kemet? And then that's what we're gonna have a conversation.
We can go Psalms four one oh four. We can go.
No, he's saying like King Henry, King James.
No, 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 I'm saying.
No, that would be the version of the Bible. So the book in the Bible would be the Psalms and it would be verse four through one oh four because that comes.
Stop, stop, stop. So, yeah, now we're getting there. So Psalms is a collection of songs. So to speak, yeah? Um, or hymns or whatever the cases are, right? So there's loads of them. You're not saying that the whole of Psalms is stolen or copied from Kemet. You're saying individual Psalms are.
There's portions, and I tell you, you better not sing that song to Moses, because I sing that song to Thutmoses. And they sound pretty damn similar. I'm just saying.
Okay, okay, I will lose the debate. I might lose the debate. Just lose this debate, but I'm going to have it, okay? Inshallah. I want to get involved. I want to get involved.
And just kind of throw some stuff out there.
We do a friendly. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna pop out. When I get back in, hopefully you guys are gonna still be on the panel. And then I'll jump in on it because I like this one.
Yeah, yeah, cause it did a Bible copy Kemet, man, because like.
Hey, hey, let's go. Hey, family tree, we're signing out right now. Thank you guys for actually coming in and tuning in and actually learning with us and you know, entertainment, man, having fun with us. Again, I'm gonna bring in everybody uh, who's off the panel on right now, but we are signing out. So I catch you guys on the other side. And again, just hit us up in the comment section, say something. Request a show, request what you would like to see more on the channel. Personally, I want to hear more from the comedic side. And just learn from my comedic brothers, personally. Anyways, family tree, peace and love and I'll catch you guys on the other side. Oh, man.